It's time. Welcome, everyone, to the July 27th City Council Work Session. Welcome, everyone, here and at home. We're closer to our break. So, the first thing up this evening is we're going to have an executive session. And so I'm going to leave the council meeting, go into executive session. The Eugene Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session. Actually, do I have to go? Do I have to? I have to convene the move from our regular council meeting to convening of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency and then call the Urban Renewal Agency into executive session. The Eugene Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in executive session to negotiate a real property transaction. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Okay, so there we go.
Yeah. We're on, apparently. Okay. The city manager is coming forward. Should leave the rest of the meeting here.
Okay.
And we're going to be talking about rental unit management livability.
Wow, it's good to go. How was that? All right, so we'll try to kind of speed through this. It's been bumped a couple of times, so I think it's important that we get the information to you. I'm going to co-present tonight with Rochelle Nicholas. Rochelle's our code compliance supervisor and manager. She's been doing a lot of work with livability in Eugene, around Eugene, and so I'm going to give the background and history, and then she'll dive into some of the details you might want to know. Neighborhood livability, especially as it relates to rental units in more transient populations and neighborhoods, has been a priority topic in Eugene for a very long time, and in actually most university towns, it's a priority topic. This is especially true in the near-university neighborhoods. 2010 was a pivotal year on this topic, as long-term frustration for concern and health and livability of the neighborhoods really kind of came together in this neighborhood livability working group. A number of recommendations were put in this, best practices, policies, and things to help improve the livability of the neighborhoods, and specifically address issues that were really dealing with alcohol use and behavior with alcohol use. This graph shows the number of multifamily units that have been added near the university since 2010, while some of these replaced existing rental housing. The large spike of growth, especially in the downtown, as you see on the far-left side, initiated a council discussion about managing behaviors and the concept of requiring onsite management in multi-unit complexes. Our desire's always been to focus on livability across the city, on almost all issues we're dealing with. You can see that the concerns have been primarily linked, these are kind of the complaints, primarily linked to large concentrations of young adults, and as you can see from this map, the majority of multi-unit housing that's been built since 2009 has been considered student housing, as illustrated by the red dots. Hopefully, they're red here. Yep, most are within one mile of campus. So we've been here before, talking about what we called onsite management. We really built on the work of the Neighborhood Livability Working Group, and we again look to other cities across the country. And we've brought this information to you before, but we were really looking to see what other strategies were in place, did anybody else have onsite management or other policies or practices in place. We started as close as Corvallis, and we went as far as Tallahassee. And Tallahassee, you might say, why are you going to Tallahassee? But we've had a pretty interesting relationship with them that started with the International Town Gown Association, where they asked Greg Rickoff and I to come to Tallahassee. They paid our flights and wages, and we did a lot of work with them around livability, so we have more information about them than some of the others. So as we looked at those communities, we see that there was a number of strategies for improving conditions. Many of them had university-sponsored Good Neighbor programs, social host ordinances, various approaches to repeat violators. Almost all had local agent requirements, and we're going to get to that in a little bit. Many of these had already been identified as strategies during that 2010 livability I do want to take a moment to reflect, because a lot has happened in this area even since the last time you spoke about onsite management. This is just a partial list of the things that are underway, and I think worth going back over again. I think the two with probably the biggest impact have been the unruly gathering ordinance, and also the U of O Students Code of Conduct being applied off-campus. Those were two significant changes, but it's really been a combination of all the efforts that are listed up here that's making a difference in advancing Eugene and the U of O as a town gown community that is modeling and leading best practices. As a side note, I know Karen Hyatt was recently at the most recent Town Gown Association Conference. It was on the East Coast, and we've definitely moved from being a community that's looking to others for ideas to one that people are looking to for ideas. Some of the other items that are up here, the EPD Rental Property Program. This is a voluntary database that rental housing units register, and we kind of keep track and inform them of things happening on their properties as complaints and calls get called to EPD. The EPD Party Patrols is a very data-led policing effort, where we are monitoring problems, and we're doing very targeted approach to party patrols, so it's not like every Saturday night from this time to this time. It's very targeted for events. The U of O Comm University Program, which is really developing student ambassadors, they've been out in the neighborhoods, painting curbs and doing other Good Neighbor practices. Sure, some of you probably can know more about this than I do. The U of O Alcohol EDU Program and staff, they've put a lot of emphasis into trying to reduce alcohol consumption. Our rental housing code and U of O's current efforts on listing property services. This is a new program that they've recently enrolled in, where if you're a good, you have to abide by certain things, and then your property gets listed on a U of O site, and they're currently working through this right now. It's been very effective in other communities. And then even smaller things, like the Thundercans Campaign. But this doesn't mean our work is done, in an effort to understand how we can keep improving livability. We've done some more survey work since the last time we spoke, and Rochelle's going to update you on that.
So, as a follow-up to the concerns raised by Councilors Lankas, staff conducted additional research around livability and onsite property management. In February of this year, co-compliance staff worked with staff from police to gather information on the number of calls for service specific to livability issues. The types of calls included loud party, loud noise, disorderly party, and beat information related to noise. This information was gathered for the two years before and the two years after the unruly gathering ordinance was passed. Additionally, staff conducted a phone survey to determine the number of units at each complex and the type of property management. Staff surveyed approximately 60 properties, ranging in size from complexes with less than 20 units to those with over 200 units. We looked at properties throughout the city with more focus on the university area to tie into the work done by the Neighborhood Livability Working Group and the increase in student housing. We identified properties that have been issued unruly gathering citations. We also talked with staff from EPD to get additional information regarding their experience with onsite property management and livability concerns. This was not a comprehensive review of a multi-unit properties Eugene, but we felt it was a good sampling of properties to help inform the discussion and direct future action. This graph shows the number of calls for service prior to the adoption of the unruly gathering ordinance compared to the numbers post-ordinance. When we looked at the calls for service specific to livability issues the two years prior to the adoption of the ordinance, we found that the number of calls went from 239 up to 340 the two years following the adoption of the ordinance. This increase is to be expected and can be attributed to a number of factors, including a spike in new multifamily student apartments. But more likely, this increase is due to a greater awareness by area residents, as well as a focus in addressing livability issues by EPD, U of O, neighborhood associations, and other city departments. Other communities that have enacted an unruly gathering ordinance have typically experienced an increase in reported incidents immediately following implementation. Several years of data are needed to accurately measure the impact of any ordinance. I would also mention that while there are no statistics to show this, what we are hearing from neighbors is that there has been significant improvements around livability issues. When looking at calls for service, it was interesting to note that there wasn't much of a relationship between the number of units and the number of calls. In fact, in our sample, smaller unit properties had more calls for livability-related services than larger properties. When we talked with EPD staff, it was noted resident managers don't provide a deterrent for these types of livability issues. In the university area, resident managers oftentimes are students and may be reluctant to address noise from parties or other disruptive behavior. Next, we looked at the number of unruly gathering citations. This chart provides a good picture of where the majority of the large gatherings are taking place. Looking at this, you can see that less than 25% of citations have been issued at multifamily properties, and that the bulk of the large unruly gatherings take place at single-family This chart gives you an idea of the type of property management used at various properties in Eugene. The two primary types of management include onsite managers with leasing hours that don't reside at the property, and then resident managers that do live onsite. Staff were surprised to learn from our phone survey that most large complexes that we surveyed do not have a resident manager living onsite. That number's here in green. Whereas if you look at the chart, the smaller complexes more often did have a resident manager, theoretically available most hours.
What's interesting about that is that most of the complaints are coming from the smaller units, so it's kind of an interesting, where the onsite is there residential is also where we're getting some of those complaints. So we've learned from the data that there really isn't an across-the-board policy or approach related to requiring onsite management that would necessarily improve the livability of any of the neighborhoods. This shows the relative number of complaints for size of housing. So in this case, the two large, the two red dots, which is, you know, numbers go up as it turns red, are both single-family dwellings, and they're not large complexes. So we also know that the dots don't tell the whole livability story. As we know from talking with neighborhoods and from some of you that have dealt with this, there's some livability complaints that really are just significantly disruptive, and it may only happen once, not 50 times, so. We do know there are a few actions that other communities have taken that have been successful. So the first is relatively simple, and it would be requiring every rental property to have a local emergency or local agent responsible party. Almost every city on the list I previously showed you has something like this in place. And because Eugene already has a rental housing program and an existing database of properties and owners, we believe we could add this requirement administratively, which makes it simple, doesn't mean that it's not have any conflict associated with it. In this case, we would, and why I thought it would be good if we got this information in front of you, is we would take the summer to work on those administrative rules, so that when we roll out in the fall with bills and as students are coming back, we could put something like that in place. And maybe Rochelle can answer this, too. I know that our Housing Policy Board Subcommittee has talked about this in terms of the rental housing, and they would also, I think, support this approach. Oh, sorry. The second targeted approach we could explore is the concept of a chronic nuisance property. Corvallis is probably the closest example of this. They put this code in place to help effect change on properties where there are multiple and continuous violations taking place and degrading a neighborhood. This could include unruly gatherings, but could also include other behaviors. So in Corvallis, it actually does include all. It's a big, significant nuisance property that talks about behavior. It could be livability issues, and we have a copy of that code if we want to talk about it more. This would be a more significant change. It's a code change, and we would recommend that we work pretty closely with the neighborhoods. And since this has been mostly talked about in the near-university areas, probably the best timing for that would be to wrap it into the neighborhood planning that we're going to implement right after we adopt Envision Eugene, because that would be a good place to do it, and it would also give the unruly gathering ordinance a little bit more time to see if that actually impacts behavior in the way that you want it to. With that, I think we'll just open it up for questions or discussion, and I know we're short on time.
I think we're going to go to about 10 after.
Okay.
Amy closing at 10 after. Give them time to rear reach. All right, so I've got Mike, and then Claire and Ellen in the queue.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that report. Appreciate it. My questions are mostly around interaction with the university, and I see my friend Karen sitting over there, and maybe she can be helpful in this one, too. One of the things I've been saying for years, I just, and I know that the university's been working on, I just saw in that report that you've made progress on, but I'd like to have more details, and that is extending the U of O's Code of Conduct off-campus. So my questions are, are there limitations on that? How far off-campus? Is any student who violates Code of Conduct, is their academic standing in jeopardy if they're off-campus when that behavior occurs? That's what I'm, you know, where are the, is it 100% the same, or mostly the same, or kind of the same, as if they were on-campus?
I'm going to, I know that we put a memo in the packet the last time we came to you that kind of talked about where they were at, because it's a pretty new thing, and I think they're still working through the details of how that's going to work. I don't know if you feel comfortable answering those, or if you'd rather answer those questions. Okay. Come on up.
Yay, Karen. All right.
Welcome back to.
Hi. Yes, thank you.
Welcome back to the table there.
Karen Hyatt with the University of Oregon, Community Relations. The Code of Conduct has extended off-campus in these kinds of issues, neighborhood livability issues, since September of last year. And basically, the code says that anything that is against the code on-campus is against the code off-campus, so alcohol violations, noise, those kinds of things can also be applied off-campus, anywhere.
No geospatial, no geologic, geographic limitation on that. So somebody's in north Eugene, up here by Georgia's house, and they're, yeah, all right.
Technically, yes.
Okay. Secondarily, there's another issue around this that I'm undereducated about jurisdictional issues when it regards the University of Oregon's police and how we interact together on issues like this. So my question is, they have complete police powers like any police department does. Where's their jurisdiction at? How far off of campus do they have those, that authority?
I don't know if I should be answering that question as much as EPD and UOPD are working on jurisdictional issues right now.
Yeah, and I don't know who the right person is. I didn't mean to point that at you, but.
Yeah, I don't know if I am going to feel comfortable locking that in. My understanding is U of O police right now just has jurisdiction on-campus.
Here's the reason I ask that, because I, I'm not certain that that's entirely the case, and the reason I know that is because I got to spend a little time around the university in the last year and finally finished my degree. And I watched the U of O Police Department folks writing citations off-campus on Franklin and on the other side of.
Clarification, anybody?
Yeah, they're a police department. They're, I mean, they have jurisdiction. It's, there's no, there's no boundary that's where they don't. They could technically write it in the middle of downtown Eugene. They're a police department. And I'm happy that, there's some, you know, there's, I'm happy to get you some specific information about that if you want us to be more specific and let you know statutorily.
Well, and I appreciate that. One of the reasons that's important to me is because I think we, as a council, have some clarifying work that we need to do around that for the community's sake. The reason is, when this was brought on, and, you know, the majority of council thought it was a good idea in endorsing their police powers, and I still think that's good in a bunch of ways, but they operate differently than EPD does in the community to the community's comfort level, and part of that is our auditor function, you know? Our police department is subject to that, and the campuses is not. So if they have jurisdiction to act in any place in the city, then I want to make sure that what we're doing here is operating with everybody under the same sort of rules and the same sort of transparency.
If you're looking for, I mean, because we can provide you legally where they can, and also practically how they're operating, that's, I mean, and that's the discussions between EPD and UOPD. So if it's, if you're looking for both, there's always a legal answer, and then there's the practical answer.
Right.
And I think what I'm hearing you say is you kind of want to know how it all, how it all works, and we absolutely can get you that.
I'd like both answers, if it's okay, legal and kind of pragmatically, how does that work, you know, and what the department does as an interaction there.
Okay.
That'd be very good information. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Claire?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I am not an attorney, but my understanding is that police are credentialed through the state of Oregon and therefore have the authority within the entire state, so they could go over to Springfield and give tickets if they wanted to. Now, whether or not the university authorizes them to do that as employees of the university, that's a different question, but in terms of their jurisdiction, it's the entire state of Oregon. My question, you mentioned a Thundercan program, but you didn't say what that was.
Thunder Buddies.
Yeah, do you want to talk about Thundercans?
Thundercans is something we rolled out, I think, about three years ago, and.
The metaphors work themselves here.
Yeah. Basically, it was a program that we rolled out to the students, because the noise that makes, the can makes when you roll it back and forth, it kind of sounded like thunder. And so it was an effort to get students to remember to bring their cans back from the curb.
24 hours. That's great. I wish we could do that in my neighborhood, where I put a polite note on my neighbor's door recently, asking them to take their trash away from the curb. So, you know, Sarah, you mentioned just a couple of potential next steps, the requiring a local agent, and looking at a chronic nuisance code. I think both of those things would be worth looking into and exploring further. And I know this conversation is focused mostly around university, but there are other rentals throughout the city, and, you know, we can definitely see properties that aren't maintained properly. Trash is allowed to pile up and spill into the street or sidewalk, weeds growing out of control, as well as tenants who themselves are a nuisance or disruptive to the quality of life for their neighbors. And I think requiring some kind of local agent to be available as a contact, I think, is a very wise thing, no matter where that rental unit is located in the city. I did find it very interesting that the statistics are showing that it's more likely a single-family rental unit, and that that's having the chronic nuisance, and that could be attributed that they have the best place to host a party, whereas a multi-unit complex may not be as conducive to trying to have 200 people come to your apartment unit. So that's an interesting twist, I think, on what some of us would have expected from a concentration of student housing might lead to a particular multi-housing unit being party central, when in fact that doesn't seem to be playing out, so. But nonetheless, I think as we think about these things and quality of life issues, we want to think about how they apply in other parts of the city, and I think those two pieces that you've mentioned would certainly help in other parts, in other wards, besides just around the university.
Ellen?
Yeah, actually, for everybody's benefit, the code says that your garbage cans need to be back adjacent to your house within 24 hours of pickup, and can't be out more within, closer than 24 hours before pickup. So that's where Thundercan comes from, is trying to get people to adhere to that code. This was my work session request, originally because of two things. One, it was related to Capstone, and whether or not they were going to have onsite management, and whether or not going to have that on a permanent basis. I know they do have onsite management, but whether or not the people who buy it five years from now, if they sell it, were going to continue that was a question. And then a lot of complaints in my part of the neighborhood about the larger units and the perception that they were causing a lot of problems. And so a couple of questions. Capstone does have onsite management, but they're not required to do that, and there's no requirement or any guarantee that they would continue. And are they disproportionately higher number of complaints than anyplace else? My understanding is they're not. They're actually relatively low.
No, I think that's why we cut that one slide by sort of number of units and number of complaints, because they do get a fair number of complaints. Most of them are within, it's neighbor to neighbor, so a lot of our multi-unit complex complaints come in, and it's somebody three doors down calling to complain about somebody three doors down. Some are going out into the neighborhood, but not disproportionate to other units of its size.
Yeah, okay. So the other was about larger units, and the surprise was, when we did the research, that actually most of them come from smaller units. So it's not the bigger units, it's actually the single-family homes that are causing most of the complaints. And so that was an interesting shift when you look at the statistics. Lots happened since we've been talking about this, especially the social host ordinance and especially the Code of Conduct being applied off-campus. And the two issues that have arisen out of this investigation are contacting rental property owners and not being able to contact them, because we don't know where they are or who they are, and the other one is multi-violators and the lack of accountability issues that are on that threshold below the social host ordinance stuff, and having some kind of accountability mechanism on their. I think one of the reasons the social host ordinance works is because there is real accountability associated with the behaviors. And so I think something similar, we'd have to learn more about Corvallis' and read it and maybe get some more information. We can talk about it next time we have this work session, but they've managed to create one that, an ordinance that deals with some of these issues at a lower level to create some accountability. Because a lot of these issues aren't criminal, or, but they really do impact livability, especially if you live near one of these houses. So, and it's just a small scattering, and we saw that, you know, there's just, there's just a number of them around, so it's not everywhere. So I'd like more information about the ordinances and what other people have done, and I do support having a local agent rule in our rental housing code, so we can contact them.
Wrap this up with, well, I can see Betty now, but we're going to, so, as quickly as you can.
Okay.
Greg, you're next, then, Betty.
So, you may not be able to answer this question, maybe somebody else would, but I'm going to ask it anyway. In terms of jurisdictional coverage, so the EPD Party Patrols, shouldn't that task be moved over to the university police department, one? And then, secondly, what is the ability of, or if they do have the authority to the university police department, to issue citations of municipal code violations, such as the social host ordinance?
So, earlier when I said I think they only apply on-campus, that's because I think in our discussions, the practicality of it has been that they don't have the resources to really go off-campus, and I think that's where it started. So I know that the chief, both chiefs have been working together on where do those lines cross, and who resources what, and so I don't have an answer. cross and who resources what, and so I don't have an answer for you today, but I think that's something that we can continue talking about.
All right, Betty.
Okay, just a question. Do we have any requirements to how close to the property an owner has to live? I know some places, they have to live within five miles, and I assume that's not true here, because some people live in California and own houses here.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have any residency requirements. In fact, this would be, we don't even have, this would be the first move to even require that they have somebody local that we can call.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.